So if we can have HTA.
Senator.
Senator Wakai.
Thank you, Chair. Aloha, Mr. Seguetti.
Hi, Senator.
Today, you're opposed to this measure, and many of the folks in the audience here are here in opposition based on the use of TAT to fund the rail project. But on May 2 of this year, you were here at the Capitol, ready to talk about how you were so supportive of a 1% TAT to pay for rail. So what has changed in the past three and a half months where you were once a big fan and cheerleader of using TAT to where you are today as being an opponent of TAT's usage?
Senator, thank you for that question. First of all, I would like to correct that, that I was never in favor of 1%. And I would venture even to ask any of the hoteliers, I believe that Mr. Gibson came to speak to you about that, as well as Mr. Tatum came to speak to you about that, I was not involved with any of those meetings. I came down here to support the hotel guys and whatever they decide to do. We are opposed to the 1% on the TAT because I think that it does -- first of all, 63% of our visitors right now are staying at the hotels, the rest are going to alternative accommodations. I really think that is the issue. But again, I was never, and I would ask you to bring anybody up that would testify that I actually proposed a 1% increase because I didn't.
Well, I didn't say you were proposing a 1% increase. As I'm saying, you were here supporting a 1% increase that at that time, on May 2, was brokered between the finance chair and the WAM chair at the time.
I was here more to support any action that you take, to support your action, as well as with hotels, if you had partnered with something.
So you were here to support the TAT on May 2, correct?
Not correct. Only was here to support the fact that you were all here together, meeting together, and the fact that you were meeting with the hotel guys. I was in support of that.
There was a press conference that was called on May 2. Tell us what you were going to say at that press conference.
I don't know because I didn't speak.
You, in your testimony today, talked about how you believe a 1% increase in the TAT is going to hurt tourism. Can you give us any factual basis for that?
Well, I can only tell you that because I am pretty much in the weeds. I just got back from Japan three weeks ago, and one of the biggest concerns that we had from our contractors was the price of the Hawaii vacation. It's, in a survey that we've done with people that have been here in the last five years, the number one reason they said they would not come back to Hawaii is because of the price of the Hawaii experience. So we do everything within our means to try to make sure we has that experience to keep them coming back, but price is definitely a concern. Anytime you take a price from the private sector, a price increase on anything, I think you need to, there is possible consumer pushback, and I think that's all we're concerned about. There may be consumer pushback to going to alternative places.
Do you have any evidence of that in the past?
Any consumer good, I could show you consumer good, that anytime you take a price increase and you get to that point of diminishing returns, where people, it could be the shirt on your back right there. You may like this shirt, and if, once the price point goes above what I like, people start looking to alternatives. That's just the point of diminishing returns on any product that you have. Now, Hawaii is a fabulous product right now, but we are becoming very, very expensive, and it's what I hear. As I said, as I travel and I get to the different markets, it's the number one objection that I have to overcome is the price of the Hawaii experience, and then, of course, the length of the flights.
Well, Mr. Seguetti, let me tell you what history shows us rather than what anecdotes you believe in. In 2009, we had 6.5 million tourists here. At that time, the TAT was 8.25%. We increased it to 9.25%, so we did what we're contemplating today back in 2009, of increasing the TAT by 1%. That increase led to us, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're now chasing 9 million tourists. So help me understand and reconcile in my mind your belief that there's going to be darkness on the horizon if we increase the TAT, when in fact, eight years ago, we did just that, and there was actually a huge increase in tourism in the state.
I think we've been very fortunate. I think that's fantastic. We've been able to overcome, come from recession and come back. It doesn't guarantee that to continue time and time again. We have an outstanding brand in Hawaii. It's a place that people around the world, what's going on globally, perceive as a safe, clean, and welcoming destination. I think that works in our favor, and we do everything we can to protect that. So I'm hoping that we can continue the trend, but it is very fragile. Anything could happen. I mean, I just got a text from my partners in Japan with the North Korea missile going over. Now we're going to monitor that, if they're going to continue. So it's very fragile, Senator, and that's all I, you know, there's no guarantees that it will continue.
So to conclude, you have no factual basis to say that a 1% increase in the TAT is going to lead to a downward number? I mean, I understand Kim Jong-un does what he does, Mother Nature's going to do whatever she does, but putting that aside, based purely on the issue of the TAT being increased by 1%, you have no factual basis that any, we're going to see a negative impact to tourism based on that? Is that correct?
Senator, all I can ever do is just give you the fact I've been in business for 45 years, and anytime I've taken a price increase on anything, there is the risk. It doesn't mean it's going to happen, but there is the risk that there would be consumer pushback. That's all I'm saying.
But Mr. Machida did analysis for the past 28 years of tourism, and it's grown by 8.36% the TAT totals there. So I'm just trying to get from you, other than just pure speculation and potential gloom, that you really don't have any facts to back up your position?
Senator, all I can tell you, and I'm not doing any gloom, all I would say to you is that any good businessman would look at what the potential, the unintended consequences could be when you take something up like a point to the TAT, where already, I think the brick-and-mortar team are already having challenges right now with alternative accommodations. And I think that those, there may be, and I could be, excuse my naivety, there could be some unintended consequences of people that are on the fence, that would like to stay at brick-and-mortar, that are all of a sudden going to say, oh, okay, now I'm going to be paying more at brick-and-mortar between rates, parking, and all the other costs that may come with it, and may jump the fence and go to alternative accommodations, which you're not right now currently able to collect taxes on. That's all I'm saying. There may be some unintended consequences when you take the price up.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Senator Galutaria.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Josh.
Thanks, Senator.
Appreciate that. And I take great interest in this because I represent Waikiki, and that is by far the greatest contributor to the TAT. So I would like to come down to the ground level, a very simple question. What will a 1% tax increase in TAT translate to? First of all, what is an average hotel room cost?
The average rev right now has gone up to $254. That's kind of, that's our average right now.
$254. I would invite any of the hoteliers to come, but I think you got the institutional knowledge to answer the question. How much will a 1% increase in TAT translate to a $254 hotel room?
Well, if you don't mind, Senator, can I use, I did the math just, but I was just in my head. It was, I did a 300, just to round it off, a 300, because the neighbor islands are more around 300, but at 300, the 925 would be $30.75.
1%.
Oh, the 1%. I don't, I just did the jump from 925 to 10.
$3, right?
Yeah, $3. $3.
Now, that's going to break the back of the industry? Listen, I mean, the industry's my friend. I may not seem like it asking that question, but we're being told that the industry's going to, you know, Helena, I mean, it's going down. And if you do the math, it's simple, or maybe I'm just missing something. But a 1% of $300 is $3. Was that too simple? Am I missing something?
No, you're not.
Okay. Well, then I'm done with my question.
I want to follow up on that.
Wait. Did he answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Senator Kim.
Thank you. Let me just follow up. So $3, if they stay five days, that's $15?
That's correct.
Okay. So did you guys object when the hotels, some of the hotels instituted a resort fee of $25?
Did I, I wasn't there when they did that.
Did HTA ever object, any time the hotels put on a resort fee or raised their hotel rates?
Well, I wasn't there when they did, Senator, when they started putting that on. But that's not my, I don't think, I'm not sure if that's.
Okay, whether you're there or not, let me ask you the question. Should a hotel put a resort fee on or raise their hotel rates, which they do from time to time? Do you guys object? Do you say that, you know, that it's going to be, we're going to become non-competitive?
No, I don't. I don't run their business, so I don't get involved with that.
Right. I mean, I'm just saying. So, you know, I can understand, I have been a supporter of protecting the monies that go to HTA and making sure it goes for the industry, making sure that it goes to improving the experience of our visitors and improving our environment. But in the case where the increase is 1%, just 1%, $3, $15 on five days, and yet, we all know that hotel room rates fluctuate, it goes up at any given time, more than $15, and resort fees go up, or resort fees have been instituted, and yet, it hasn't broken the back of anybody at this point in time, and it will continue to go up. Rates will continue to go up. Is that correct?
I think that'd be more of a question for the hotel guys.
No, I'm asking you because you objected, you objected to a 1% increase, and you said that it would make Hawaii non-competitive.
That 1% is all part of the objection I have to overcome with my contractors, that the price, not, I mean, it's car rentals, it's flying over here, it's the rooms, it's all of it, Senator, all together.
Right. So why put it on just a 1% increase? In fact, do you know what the room rate is in Las Vegas? Tax? What the room rate taxes in Las Vegas?
Not off the top of my head, I don't, Senator.
Okay. And that's my point. Most people don't know what the rate is. Most people don't, when they go somewhere, they don't know what the tax rate is. In fact, Las Vegas just raised their rate about 1% in March of 2017, didn't stop any local residents from going there, because they don't look at that. You know, 1% is negligible when it comes to that. So I'm just saying that I understand the concerns of the industry, but I think the arguments have to be greater than that, because I've heard that argument back in the 80s, when they were first trying to institute the 5%. And then again, when it was increased, again, there was increase, and I think, you know, the legislators are getting a little bit exhausted on hearing the same argument over and over, that it's going to impact the industry, when in fact, I know, and, you know, I'm not saying that the hotels and the industry doesn't have any right to raise the rates accordingly, but it's similar thing with the government. And finally, Mr. Seguetti, I understand that in fact, during that period when the House proposed the 2.75, that in fact, the industry and yourself did meet, and you guys did agree to support the 1% instead of the 2.75% increase.
I facilitated meeting with the hotelers, but I did not attend any of those meetings.
That's not what I said. You agreed to support the 1% over the 2.75%.
I didn't agree to anything.
That's what I was told, you agreed, and I heard that from good sources, and that's why you were included in the press release, to say that you were going to appear at that press conference.
The only time I heard the 1% is when they came back and said it was an option to the 2.75, that their backs were against the wall, and there was a concession that they could not live with 2.75, that they could live with 1%. If they said they could live with 1%, then I was going to be with them.
Okay. But that was what was agreed to, that they could live with 1%.
That was.
Because I was, I was livid that that agreement was made, because it didn't have any public hearing, and I came out and say, I don't think that's legal to do, and I was livid that the industry and that HTA would agree to support the 1% and that they could live with it. So I know for a fact that that was the agreement at that time, so if you could live with it at that time, I don't understand why all of a sudden they can't live with it now. Thank you.
I just have a quick question. How many hotels nationwide have a resort fee?
Senator, I have to get back with you. I do know that we're at 9.25, we're number three with hotels that do put a fee, and then we would jump to number two if we went to the 10.25, but I don't know exactly how many hotels across America would have that fee.
A resort fee.
I could find out for you.
In Las Vegas, it's $43.87 on average.
But how many, but how many hotels nationwide have a resort fee?
That's what I would need to find out for me, from the hotel team.
Okay. If you check on the American Hotel and Lodging Association website, it says that contrary to reports, resort fees have steadily declined over the past decade. According to a comprehensive survey on hotel trends, a mere 7% of hotels charge a mandatory resort fee in 2014. The percentage has remained under 7% since 2000. So actually, the national trend is to get rid of resort fees. Were you aware of that?
I was not aware of that, Senator.
Thank you. Any other questions? Senator Calhoun.
I think it'd be better for the industry, yeah. I don't know where they go.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. I just, wait, one quick question, Mr. George. Do, are resort fees, do they, does a TAT reflect or somehow charge to the resort fee as well?
No, not right now.
Okay. So there's no TAT on the resort?
There's no TAT on resort fees. We overturned that, I think, back in 2013 or 14.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Okay, are there any, any other questions for anybody else? No, if you have a question, what is it? No, you got a call.
It's mixed from hotel to hotel. There's no standard resort fee component. Generally covers discretionary services over and above the actual hotel room itself. So it could, for example, without rigor, we offer a resort fee package, which, by the way, is discretionary, not mandatory, that would encompass, for example, a bus tour around Waikiki, the ability to use the Waikiki trolley, a free canoe ride, various amenities that would be offered to the guest in return for paying the resort fee. That's fundamentally what the resort fee is. But again, I would make the point that I made in the first informational briefing, which is that resort fees are mixed, they are a difficult part of the industry, and they are driven primarily by the fact that our costs are escalating rapidly. So in other words, although we can talk about the increases in the room rates until the cows come home, the room rate increases themselves, as I think we briefed to the committees after the informational briefing, have been pretty mellow over the last couple of years. There's only so much that you can raise that increase, and before you start to price yourself out of your destination. In that period, our costs have gone up equal, if not more, in some cases. When you see construction costs, for example, that have escalated at 10% per year, that'll tell you something about whether the industry feels it can generate the revenue to renovate the hotels in Waikiki or anywhere else in the state. When you see general sales and marketing costs, when less money is really allocated over to the industry through HTA to do destination, sales, and marketing, that slack is picked up by the industry. That's an increased cost. Obviously, labor costs continue to escalate, and we do our part, along with the rest of the industry, to try to pay our workers a fair wage, and that's an increasing cost. So the point here is that when you, like any other budgetary analysis, if you're only looking at the revenue side of the equation and not focusing on what's happening on the expense side, then you're not going to have the full picture.
There is some value to the resort fees if it's paying for, like you said, canoe rides, rides around Waikiki, access to fitness center, or the, you know, beautiful swimming pools and waterfalls and landscaping that the hotels invest in. I mean, that's part of the experience of visitors staying in one of these hotels.
Visitors want, visitors want choice, and the resort fee is one way of providing them that choice. If a visitor doesn't want to pay the resort fee, they don't have to pay the resort fee. That's an extra amenity offered to them in return for the resort fee.
Okay. Switch hats. You also have a critical position on the Council of Revenues, and you've served on that for some time, and often, you know, I've gone through the minutes, and you're the guy that provides the Council of Revenue's input, you know, from the tourism industry perspective. So reflecting on what Senator Harimoto was referring to, and the TAT forecast and future growth for tourism, Senator Galutaria outlined how 1% is potentially just $3 a day for a potential visitor, so it's a drop in a bucket for what a visitor might pay. What is your thoughts on how we're forecasting TAT at 8% in this piece of legislation, and also that it's a small price to pay for tourism coming to Hawaii?
Well, you put too many drops in a bucket, and it overflows, and that's our point. No, Senator Wakai, we probably are not going to be able to offer you some empirical evidence as to whether or not there has been a harmful effect on the tourism industry through increases in the TAT, but I know what George Seguetti said, which is, which when you're, which is when you're in business, if you increase your rates, your costs, there is going to be a negative impact. So I'm sorry, I don't think anybody can tell anybody in the industry that raising the TAT is somehow going to help the industry. I think the contrary is the case. On the, back to the Council on Revenues, I'm only one of a number of members on the Council, and as you know, the Council comes from various parts of Hawaii. They come from, you know, Maui CPAs to UH economics professors, to tourism industry representatives. So I don't speak for, you know, the entire Council here, but I can tell you what the procedures are that we follow and how we got to the results. First of all, the TAT projection over the next six years, because we forecast on the basis of the out years, same as the state budget forecasts, after that, somebody else takes over in the way out years. But our forecast on the TAT is, as noted, 3.8% in FY '18, 3.6, 3.4, 3.3, 3.1, 3.0. Those TAT projections are not the Council saying, oh, by the way, we think it's going to be 3.8 next year. They are based on Council mean projections as to visitor arrivals and visitor expenditures. So they're crunched through a certain model that spits out 3.8. And so what we are doing is trying to say, well, what do we really think is going to be happening with visitor arrivals, visitor expenditures, and how does that thing going to translate into the TAT? Now, here's the problem. The model assumes a pre-Airbnb model, and so if you're like spitting in arrivals and expenditures from the visitor perspective and assuming that your net growth rate, if it's going to be a growth rate, at the end of the day, is going to be the same as it was 10 years ago before we had Airbnb, then you've got a problem in your model, and you're going to probably conservatively assume a lower overall TAT projection. So I mean, that's the issue with the Council. And then on the Council overall, although the mention was made by the Chair, of a 4.5% -- and I speak again, just as a Council on Revenue member, although mention was made by the Chair of a 4.5% GET increase from the last, just recently completed fiscal year to the current fiscal year, a 4.5%. After that, it declines to into the threes. So it's 4.5 in FY '18. The Council has a meeting coming up in three weeks to re-project that number, but that's the preliminary, as of May 30 Council. But now we're down to 3.4, 3.3, 3.6, 3.4, 3.6. So the reality is that the Council's projections of the GET out over the next seven years are primarily in the mid-threes. The 4.5% was only because we really had a jerk in the last fiscal year, where we had a very high GET the previous year. Our actual production, projection on overall general fund increases, the reality is, at the end of the last fiscal year, is 2%. So we're saying to ourselves at the Council level, well, fine, okay, it was 2%. So that was probably an overreaction to the prior year, but now what's it really going to smooth out at? The first year, it'll probably go up a little bit more, because it's a year-on-year, right? So it's 2% of the previous year, 4.5% this year versus last year. But our assessment, at least right now, is that if you look at the next seven years, you're at mid-threes. So you're at mid-threes on the GET from the Council's perspective, and somewhere in the mid-threes averaging on the TAT. That's what the Council thinks.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Casey.
What's the difference between do tax and core in the projections of the general growth rate? So you're not really looking at the percentage of the GET or the TAT, but is it core, core just looks at the general growth rate? Is that what they try to predict?
I'm not sure what you're looking at, Chair. I'm looking at a letter to you dated August 24 from Kurt Kawafuchi, Chair of the Council on Revenues. The exhibit to that letter is what I'm referencing right now. So that went to you, and basically what he describes there is what the Council projects through FY 2023, and then after that is a projection by other state agencies. We don't go out farther than seven years.
Okay. I guess what I'm looking at, since your estimates of general fund tax revenue from the meeting at May 30, FY '17 to FY '23, '17, 2.5, '18, 4, '19, 4, '20, 24.5, and '21, 4.5, '22, 4.5, '23, 4.5.
I believe that that is the overall general fund projection. I'm not positive, Chair, I just don't have what you're looking at right now, but again, I'm looking at the material that was sent to you by Chair Kawafuchi, and it, and I'm focusing on general, I'm focusing on, oh, I see what you're saying. So the top line on that is 4.0, 4.0, 4.5 for the overall general fund revenue. But now, if you look below that, it's GET and TAT broken out. That assumes, obviously, that the other sources of revenue are going to be higher if the GET and TAT are lower than the overall general fund. I'm not sure where the Council is going on that in our next meeting, but that's, you know, two weeks away.
Yeah, so when you look at the lines, none of the numbers dip in regards to lowering the percentage. So fiscal year '17 is lower than fiscal year '18, which is lower, the number, the trend is all, they're all going up in the GET, the income tax.
It's true that they are going up, but what I think we're talking about today is how much are they going up? What are the validity, what is the validity of the legislatures, or SB4, as I should say, financial plan? What is the, you know, is a 4% GET valid to go to Senator Harimoto's line of questioning? If you're going to assume that your TAT is in fact going to be higher, and I'm not sure I understand the budget and finance heads' path there on the 8%, but assume for the time being that that's correct. If the TAT revenue is going to be higher, then what actually is going, is 3% safe on the GET side? And so that, I think that's a productive analysis for this committee, is, well, okay, does this financial plan work? Because we're saying we don't think we're going to get the TAT side of this revenue. And again, I would make the point that it's not, this industry is not just about TAT. This industry produces a lot of the GET revenue for the state. So if our industry is harmed, either internally by excessive costs or externally by external factors, either one of which could happen, one more drop in the bucket, then it's a double whammy to your plan, and that's why we keep on saying, you know, don't put this all on the tourism industry, that's dangerous. If I were the FDA, I would listen to that, but you know.
Yeah. It's just that in Hart's own recovery plan, they use 4.3.
You know, I don't know where Hart got its recovery number. You can ask Hart that.
So we're actually using 3, and Hart, in their own recovery plan, used 4.3.
You mean on the GET?
Yeah.
No, I accepted that you are trying to use 3, but you're also not building in that $500 million stress contingency. You're getting to your 3%.
Yeah, which is not a number which was established.
No, I agree with you. I'm just, you know, this is an assessment of how conservative are you going to be with this plan, and, you know, how much are you actually going to try, from a policy perspective, to get a plan together that everybody is going to be accepting? So. So, so, you know, the 3%, one could, one could logically and reasonably ask, is that 3% going to be sufficient over time? Because you've kept that a very limited period of time. If you stretch it out, as we've always said, and as every county, every mayor has said, stretch out the GET surcharge as, as originally proposed, and that, I think, would be acceptable to everybody.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Senator Wakai?
Mr. Case, is the resort fee an option? Could I go to Outrigger and say, I don't want to pay a resort fee, I'm going to pay whatever the room rate is?
Yes.
You have that option to back out of the resort fee?
Yes.
Why wouldn't the hotels just embed a resort fee within your room rates?
Again, the, the issue there is that you are feeling compressed on the costs, you are feeling that you've got to try to spin out some of your costs into an alternative so that the guests can choose that or not, so that you can offer them a rate and overall, an overall rate choice. They can make that call. The room, the room's going to cost what the room costs. The amenities are going to be, and I don't want to make this sound like all amenities, and I don't want to make it sound like it's a, it's a one-size-fits-all, because every one of the hotels has their own approach to this, every one of them. Every one of them is trying to find, trying to find the way to, to, to balance a revenue stream that supports their costs and a reasonable profit. That's what every single hotel is trying to do. They have different mixes for how they do it. Different companies have different mixes for how they do it. So, so the, the reason is that some people do in fact choose the alternative that you select. They just front-load everything into the hotel, and then they charge that rate to everybody. And then some people don't offer any, any amenities, and some people do it the way Outrigger does, and what most of the industry does, which is a room rate and a resort fee alternative.
Is a resort fee just a means in which not to have to pay for the TAT?
No, not at all.
So would it be prudent for us to contemplate, maybe in the future, putting the TAT on the resort fee?
Well, we'll come back here and have many of the same discussions that we're having with you right now. We'll tell you that if you do that, then the hotels will simply adjust to it in some way, and they will try then to recover some of the, the amenity costs on a nondiscretionary basis through their room rates, which they will then be forced to increase if you do that, and the result of that, we think, is going to be harmful to the industry, because it puts us at a competitive disadvantage. This falls into the category of, of, you know, sometimes, a, what sounds to be a fairly simple approach turns out to have a lot of ripples in the pond.
You mentioned earlier how you were against the 1% increase in the TAT, and when we did that, this is similar to the question I gave to Mr. Segetti, when we did that in 2009, of going from 9.25 to 9.8, 8.25 to 9.25, tourism numbers continue to, to skyrocket to where they are today. Help me understand again how, although history shows us that there's actually no effect whatsoever, that the upward trajectory continues in that way, how you have some different view of a 1% increase on, 1% increase on TAT's effect on tourism numbers?
I think external factors and the, and the continued success of the Hawaii brand are masking the negative effects of the increase in the TAT. That's what I think is really going on. So you, you are drawing a connection between, well, our visitor arrivals and expenditures are going up, and our TAT revenues are going up, and therefore, we can increase the TAT all we want, and, or at least thus far, and it hasn't hurt us. And I don't accept that, that, that connection, that, that relationship. What I think is happening is that we've had a good run, as George just said. We've had a good run, and that run is, we think precarious. Our entire industry is sitting here saying to you that we've had a good run and things are precarious. We are, we are concerned about the pace of visitor arrivals in the next year or so. We're concerned about the pace of visitor expenditures in categories such as retail and restaurant, and the, the start of an erosion in, in expenditures is always the, the discretionary discretionary. So you come here, you go to a hotel, you get a hotel, okay, that's the first thing you pay for, and then you start to decide, well, you know, what kind of restaurants am I going to go out to? What, what am I going to spend in the stores? Okay? There are danger signs coming at us right now. Now, can we say to you that because, as Senator Galutaria points out, we have to pay $3 more for, for, you know, in TAT, you know, for a $300 hotel room, can we say to you that $3 is going to tip, tip the entire scale? Well, you know, okay, it sounds a little far-fetched, $3. After all, what is $3? Well, what about all the other dollars that we've also put onto our costs? What about the other things that we are trying to face? There does, in fact, come a tipping point when you start to run out of your run of luck, and that's what we think is happening. And we see destinations across the world. They love our business. They, they, they're dying for it. They're not raising their TATs, you know, they're not raising their, their, you know, whatevers to, you know, they're trying to compete with us, and that's what George is just saying. We have Japanese wholesalers are telling us now, some of our bread and butter, wholesalers in Japan are telling us, you guys are just getting too expensive, I'm going to send them somewhere else. That's, that's the industry telling you what we think, okay? You have a, you have a policy call to make. We think the policy call of, of, of increase in the TAT is A, counterproductive for our industry, and B, the wrong solution for rail, because we think that you are relying on it, on it, on an income stream that is very shaky. So some of this stuff, we can't prove it to you. We can tell you what we think, and that's what we think.
Okay. Well, the history shows us that what you're saying is not exactly true, but I'll leave it at that, Mr. Case. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Chair, could I comment on one other aspect while I'm not under that alarm bell?
You know, we have questions for other people, so if you can make that point really brief.
The Las Vegas situation, it's apples to oranges if you compare our overall TAT charge against the TA charges in other jurisdictions, because A, they don't have a general excise tax, if they have any tax at all. It's a, it's a sales tax, and some of them don't have a sales tax. So you have to equalize all of that to come to a, to come to an answer as to whether our TAT is high enough. If you combine our TAT, especially an increase, with a GET, which is a broad-based GET, we are among the highest taxed in this country, and that makes it very difficult for us to continue to succeed.